America, and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Reba.
Mr. Benomo.
Here.
Mr. Chapman.
Here.
Dr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Early.
Here.
Mr. John.
Present.
Mr. Mahalik.
I'll put this straight through the phone tonight.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mr. Wallace.
Here.
Ms. Yanek.
Here.
Announcement of executive sessions held as follows: August 18, 2015, Personnel Tax Appeals; August 27, 2015, Personnel Tax Appeals. Public announcements in recognition. Dr. Butler.
We have none this evening, Mr. Chapman.
Thank you. One announcement before we go to public comment. The following items will be taken off the agenda for this evening. Number 28, number 80, number 90, number 91, and number 92. And also number 77. Now, public comment directed to the board on agenda items only. Anyone, Mr. Benomo?
Teresa Redwinski.
Excuse. Okay.
Anyone else?
No.
Okay. Approved the board meeting minutes. Regular board meeting July 30, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Treasurers' report for July... Oh, we need a vote, I'm sorry.
All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Treasurers' report for July 2015.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of approving the Treasurers' report, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
At this time, I'll turn the program over to Dr. Butler.
Okay, Mr. Chapman, we do have a presentation this evening from Millennium Administrators. Welcome.
I provided a proposal in front of all of you, and the primary purpose of the proposal is that, if many of you remember, last July, we implemented a standalone MRI network that was available to all district employees, where they could self-refer themselves if they had to have a CAT scan, PET scan, or an X-ray. And they would self-refer themselves to a standalone facility, which was what we were doing, was driving them to a lower-cost provider so that the district would not incur deeper expenses if that particular individual referred themselves to a hospital. So we also, the U.S. Imaging Program has been in place for the last year, and it's been very successful, but we've heard some feedback from folks that sometimes they're being directed to other facilities in the Kingston area or surrounding areas that's not as convenient for the district employees. So we went direct to Hazleton Imaging and negotiated deeper rates, discounted rates, with Hazleton Imaging, so that all the district employees, if they choose to, can be referred to Hazleton Imaging and receive an even deeper discount on these services, such as the biopsies, CAT scans, PET scans, stress tests, so forth, and also be offered the VIP treatment, where they would be able to, the Hazleton School District employee will receive VIP treatment in getting into the facility immediately. And in addition to that, they'll have a dedicated service line that they can call and schedule their appointment, or they will have the ability to go online and schedule their appointment. But the key component here is that they will receive deeper discount rates at the Hazleton Imaging facility if they choose to utilize that facility. This program merely will be promoted to the district employees. We believe, based on some of the utilization that was supplied to us by Northeastern Blue Cross, that if those individuals would have utilized the services based on the pricing fee that Hazleton Imaging provided to us, you would have realized a savings of close to well over $270,000. So, we are proposing that we are going, we would like to add the Hazleton Imaging facility as a preferred provider for the school district employees. And once again, it is not a mandate. The member is the consumer, and certainly will direct themselves to whom, whichever facility they choose to go to, whether it be the hospital, or continue to use U.S. Imaging if they choose to, or go direct to Hazleton Imaging. And that's pretty much, you know, the objective of the proposal.
Anyone have any questions or comments on that?
I don't have a question on this proposal, but I was wondering if the new program that was supposed to start up with the new school year on the wellness program was going to start?
Yes, we are actually in communication as far as promoting that scheduling for September, and we're working with Jesse in the HR department, but yes, we are in the middle of the implementation as we speak. So, we're going to be coordinating that, and we've had several conference calls, but we haven't determined the exact dates as yet. But it will be kicked off for September. Biometric screenings, I assume you're referring to.
Yes.
Yes.
Anyone else?
So, you're looking for a motion tonight to approve this proposal?
To add this provider as a preferred provider, being willing to be able to promote it within the district.
I'll make the motion.
Motion is recommend board approve the proposal from Millennium Administrators regarding imaging services.
I'll second it.
Any questions or comments on that? Mr. Reba?
Thank you.
Do we need a public comment on that?
Any public comment on that? Okay, then.
All in favor of the imaging proposal, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, under curriculum instruction, approve items 1 through 11 with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Just a proofreading for number four. Our representative's name is misspelled. Sorry.
Anything else? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 1 through 11, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Special Education, ESL, Alternative Education, approve items 12 through 16 with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 12 through 16, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Nutrition, approve items 17 through 19 with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 17 through 19, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Transportation, approve items 20 through 23 with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 20 through 23, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Technology, number 24, recommend board approve the addition of 13 printers to be added to Hazleton Area School District's existing operating license with NCDS corporate.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments on 24? Mr. Reba?
Number 24, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Student Activities, Athletics, and Extracurricular, recommend board approve the following coaching appointments.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? 25?
On number 25, I talked to Mr. Barletta today. Normally, the field hockey team uses the power at the Career Credit Union to run the scoreboard, so I would like to get it on the agenda tonight, so it's understood that it's okay for us to use it over there, and it's already been okayed over there with the board over there. So if we could add that on to E, to have some type of an agreement with the credit union to use their power for the scoreboard for the field hockey.
You want to make that a motion? Yeah, make it a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay.
We call that 26?
Or E, letter E, 25?
E 25.
Any other questions or comments on letter E? Mr. Reba?
Number 25, A through E, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Security, approve items 26 through 30 with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Did I get a second?
Noting the removal of 28.
Yeah.
Excuse me, removal of number 28?
Did I get a second? I didn't hear it. Second?
Yes, I second.
All right, questions or comments?
I'd just like to wish Mr. Strenchrock the best of luck in his new endeavors, and he was always a very honest and trustworthy person, whenever we had to deal with him.
I would second that.
Wish him the best.
I agree.
Anything else? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 26 through 30, excluding 28, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No on 30.
Ayes have it, motion passes.
Facilities and Capital Projects, approve items 31 through 36 with one motion.
So moved.
Second. Questions or comments?
One question. Mr. Gunshur, could we get an explanation on this change order? On number 36, the change order for 59.3? But based on, like, what we just went through with Maple Manor, and I was told last night by somebody, at the minimal, they should have put a bucket in the ground to see what was underneath there, but they didn't, Barry Islett didn't do any of this, did they? So you just wing it and say, "Let's see what's there"? How much ash is there? Did you say eight feet of ash?
And this isn't directed at you, Mr. Gunshur. I will not pay Barry Islett's bill tonight on this, okay, for the second time. But, once again, we can't dig a hole and find dirt, it seems like. Unfortunately, this isn't the kids' fault. The kids have waited a long time to get this structure there, all right? I mean, they've been, the female athletes who use this stadium have been more than patient. And as much as I can't stand this, I'm not going to hold up that project from them having the equal opportunity locker room facilities that the boys have had, because they've waited way too long. It's just unbelievable to me that a change order costs almost 70% of what the project cost. That's unconscionable. But I'm not holding it up, because the kids have waited long enough, and the kids haven't done anything wrong here.
Any other questions or comments on that?
Mr. Gunshur, if we looked at any other options, I mean, you're saying these ashes are down eight feet?
Yes, we looked at possibly going with aisles, and because we have a slab, wall face, we have reinforced the slab, kind of floating above the ashes. So when it's all set and done, there would probably be about the same price. I don't think there's any other option. But what we're going to do is monitor, this is not to exceed price, we're going to monitor how much dirt is actually taken out, because we didn't explore the whole area where we did take these out, the ashes. But we're going to monitor what is found and how much of it is left.
Did they look into, did they give us an option of a mat slab? Are you talking, the mat slab's going to be as much as... As removing? What, the mat slab?
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. He had my one ear. I can't hear out of the other. Any other questions or comments? Mr. John, I thought you had something to say, no?
Yeah, I just find it unconscionable that we didn't do any borings. I really don't. And, Mr. Gunshur, I think you just said you only checked the area where they started? Are you saying there could be more ashes other than where they're at now?
Well, we won't serve any other areas. It's possible that there is an issue.
Well, does that mean that this price could increase?
No. That means don't dig another hole of the stadium.
Okay, yeah, God forbid, yeah.
So we have to take the whole eight feet of ashes out? Is that correct? And suppose you get down below that and there's something else?
What'd they say, below that topsoil?
Don't have to go any further.
No. Okay, okay.
Hopefully.
So this is a price not to exceed? Okay.
Be right up to the point, Penny.
Anything else?
It's a shame they left you here by yourself to answer these questions. I just wanted to say that.
He expected it.
Mr. Reba?
Numbers 31 through 36, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No on 36.
No on 36.
No on 36.
No on 36.
Still passes.
Okay, I have Mr. Benomo's no, Mr. Early's no, Mr. Mahalik's no, and Mr. John's no. Is that correct?
Correct.
So 36 passes 5-4.
Finance, approve items 37 through 46 with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments?
If I can just interrupt real quickly, we have representatives here from Martini Incorporated, Evangel Bus Company, and Roar Bus Service, and I think one of them wanted to say a few words about number 46.
He probably could have talked from...
My name is Kathleen Evangelandis, and after 66 years of the school bus business, it was difficult to see the item on the agenda. But I'd like to say thank you to all the superintendent's names and director's names that I can remember from when I was a little girl, especially to all of you through your cooperative, incredibly cooperative spirit, and to the Transportation Division, and especially to Jennifer, who's irreplaceable. Thank you to the board, thank you to the business office, and thank you to Jen.
I'm Jack Martini, Martini School Bus. Pretty much echo the same things that Kathy just said. What we've done at this point, we'd like to introduce to you the newest family in the school bus business, Roar Bus Company's from Harrisburg. We, in our hearts, feel that if we're going to retire, this is the company we want to do it with. So, enough from us. I'd like to introduce John Trance from Roar Bus Company, and his son David Trance is here also. And again, thank you to everybody for 40 years on our part.
66 on ours.
104 years, not bad.
I know.
Thank you for sharing that with us.
Any questions or comments before we do roll call?
I'd like to make a comment to both of you people. As principal at the Christian High School, it was always a pleasure to call either/or of you, because if we made a call, we knew something was going to be done, and done immediately and correctly. Mr. Roar, I don't know, you have big shoes to follow, Phil. Believe me. And if you're half as good as they are, you're going to be fantastic. It was a pleasure to work with both of you, and I am sorry to see you retire, but God bless you. I shouldn't have said that, by the way.
Here, here. Anything else? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 37 through 46, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No on 42.
No on 40.
Any other no votes besides Mr. Wallace and Mr. John? Thank you, motion passes.
Number 47, recommend board approve the following bids, request for qualifications and/or request for proposals.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba?
Any questions on the bids? Mr. Krasinski can answer any questions. On 47, 1 through 11, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
48 bills.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments on the bills? Mr. Reba?
48, A through J, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No on E and G.
No on E and G.
No on G.
No on E and G.
So we have Mr. Benomo, no on E and G, Mr. John, no on E and G, Mr. Wallace, E and G, no, and Ms. Yanek just... G, no, and Ms. Janik, just G?
Yes.
Any other no votes? Ice habit, the bills pass.
Superintendent's agenda, approve items forty...
Tony, I'm sorry, I'm no on E and G as well.
Okay, so, G?
I apologize, yeah, I apologize, I had cut you, sorry.
That's okay. So G did not pass.
Prove items forty-nine through fifty-nine under the superintendent's agenda with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers forty-nine through fifty-nine, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Prove...
Ice habit, motion passes.
Prove items sixty through seventy-four with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Dr. Butler, number seventy-three is coming under the recommendation of the principal?
That's correct, Mr. Wallace.
Thank you.
Mr. Dr. Butler, if you can fill the blanks in seventy-two and seventy-three, please.
Sure, seventy-two is David Danchel. Seventy-three is Jim Hudok, salary eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six.
Any other questions or comments on any of those items?
On a separate note, item number sixty-two, can somebody explain to me, you know, I like the Pines, I appreciate their support of the Cougars, but are we going into the business now of doing advertising for particular companies on the basis of being handed a T-shirt? I'm just, I'm worried about precedent here. I'm not sure that this is necessarily the best way to go about...
Mr. Patrone, would you like to comment on that one?
I'd make a motion to, do we know what else is on the shirts, or does it just say Pines Eatery supports Hayes County Cougars? I'd make a motion to table.
Second, the motion.
The only problem is, I believe we have a home event prior to our next game if they planned on passing them out. Isn't that accurate? Okay. Thank you.
We have a motion...
Motion to table sixty-two, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion to table passes.
Good point.
Any other questions or comments? All right.
Number sixty to seventy-four, excluding sixty-two, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No on seventy-three.
Ice habit, motion passes.
Prove items seventy-five through eighty-seven, minus seventy-seven and eighty with one motion. Excuse me. Yes.
Dr. Butler, did you say minus seventy-seven to eighty, or seventy-seven and eighty?
No, seventy-seven and eighty. Thank you, Mr. Early.
We need a motion and a second. So moved.
I'm sorry.
Questions or comments?
I'd personally like to take time here with Mr. Gunshur. You have a totally thankless job doing what you're doing, and it's the while that you've been with us, you've taken, you've stand here and taken every hard question and have answered every question, have returned every phone call, and I wish you nothing but the best, and thank you for everything you've done for us here in the district.
And, Mr. Gunshur, I'd like to second that.
Very unappreciated.
I would have said the same thing that Mr. Wallace did. He's a good man, and he's going to be missed, so thank you.
I'll second that.
I've been around a long time on this board, Mr. Gunshur, and it's been really nice working with you. It's one of the first times we've been comfortable with someone who's providing us information about what's really going on with our various projects, construction projects.
Anything else?
On number seventy-two, let me make sure I've got the right agenda I'm looking at here. No, hold on a second here. Number seventy-one, has this been cleared with the current band director? We've got an assistant band director being appointed. The question is, has this been... Is this okay with the current band director?
Yes, it is, Dr. Childs. Ms. Gallagher was, as you might recall, hired as a music teacher. She then, very quickly, knowing that we had a need for an assistant band director with our marching Cougar Band, expressed an interest, and our new band director, of course, embraced her interest very quickly, and I think they're doing a nice job with the group.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, number seventy-five through eighty-seven, excluding seventy-seven and eighty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
And finally, approve items eighty-eight and eighty-nine.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments on eighty-eight or eighty-nine? Mr. Reba?
Numbers eighty-eight and eighty-nine, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
And, Mr. Chapman, may I say that I've had the opportunity to be in Mr. Crawford's classroom a number of times, and he's a big loss to our district and has served our students very well in my short tenure here. We're going to miss him, but I do want to publicly thank him for everything he's done for our students in the Career Center.
Thank you, Dr. Butler.
And I'd also like to take this opportunity, if we have any candidates here or newly appointed teachers, if you would please stand so we could recognize you at this time? Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the board up here?
Mr. Chapman, I'd like to make a motion to take the acting title out of Mike Bull's possessor's position as vice principal at the Hayes County Career Center and make it a permanent position.
Second.
Second, that.
Okay, any questions or comments on that? Mr. Reba? I'm sorry, that's a new item. Public comment on that? All right now, Mr. Reba?
Okay, on the new motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Anything else from up front?
I just want to thank, I don't know if everybody saw in the paper, but we had a lot of our teachers from the STEM Academy that, you know, are continuing with, you know, learning how to teach in the STEM environment and putting in their own time, up, and I believe it was at King's, doing a program through King's University, so...
Thank you.
And, Mr. Early, I had the pleasure of attending that event, as was Miss Ernst, was present as well, and I was so proud of our teachers. They were absolutely the epitome of everything we would expect in professionalism, knowledge, comfortable up there leading in front of colleagues across the street, excuse me, just an amazing job, so proud of what they're doing in terms of integrated learning, and they just represented the district so well.
Any public comment on any non-agenda items from anyone in the audience?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
No, wait a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Childs, you want to go in the audience, because I'm talking to the audience now? I'm just kidding.
No, that's what I'm saying. That motion to adjourn just came before, I got to just...
Okay, sorry, Doc.
Talk about things. I'd like to bring up two or three items this evening. First off, I would like to ask Dr. Butler what has transpired with regards to the, to the guidance department and the distribution of guidance personnel. Again, I'm looking at two quite diametrically opposite situations, where you're dealing with one guidance counselor taking care of eleven-hundred K to eight students at Heights Terrace, and you've got two guidance counselors at the STEM school dealing with five-hundred students, and that just makes absolutely zero sense to me, having a full-time guidance counselor at Arthur Street. I just can't buy that as being an acceptable way of dealing with this. If we really need two guidance counselors at the STEM school, I'm concerned that we're not admitting the right students to the STEM school. There's a problem there.
Dr. Childs, thank you for your concern. Again, my plan is to meet with Ms. Blanudis, Mr. Chapman, he had next week. You know, our principals and counselors have been busy scheduling students and making sure we're ready to go for day one, so this is high on my priority list, and we'll absolutely have some information ready for the board soon.
Secondly, returning, Mr. Reba, to what I'd asked you about at the committee meetings last week, I am now informed that we have about a hundred and twelve subs available to work with as teachers. Sounds like a lot, turns out not to be a lot at all, because they are not all committed specifically to this district, they're not all necessarily available on any given day. What is the situation with regards to retired teachers? What are they allowed to, what are they allowed to take on in terms of payments and so forth in addition to what their pension plans allow?
Two comments, and we did have this on our exec session list tonight, but we didn't get what, unfortunately, but we did discuss it in our cabinet meeting on Monday morning, and what we basically came down to and the point we're at is, we're going to send a survey out to all of our retired teachers to survey them to see if they are interested in coming back to work for us as a substitute. I believe we'd have to go through that company that we discussed last week, but we thought the first step would be to see what the interest is in the retirees, because that's kind of the big unknown in the whole discussion.
Well, I'm hoping that you'll include in that, in that letter that you send out to the retirees, something that says, here is what the state law allows, because what I'm running into, people I've talked to, don't seem to know exactly what they're allowed to and what they're not allowed to do.
Doc, I can answer that very easily. They're not allowed to do anything. The only way you can do it is if you're employed by an independent agency who then contracts with the district, and you're hired by the independent agency has hired you to work through the district. You cannot put your name out there and just substitute once you're retired, and anybody who's gone to an exit meeting in the last five years will tell you, they'll tell you point blank, if you do it, you can lose your entire pension. The only way it can be done is through what Tony was talking about. You know, if Jared would start an agency and we'd hire, you know, his group, that's entirely different, but you cannot go in day-to-day certified, non-certified areas, can't be done.
Okay, if you're accepting any payment, I gather, I say if you're accepting any money, right, so, okay, so, again, explaining this to, in your letter that goes out, would strike me as being the appropriate thing to do. Okay, good. And finally, I had one very, one of our, we have so many very conscientious teachers, but I had one approach me from McAdoo recently, pointing out the section of the area that supplies McAdoo's students is really inaccessible for, it makes it, they're set up in such a way that it's virtually impossible for students coming from that area to participate in after-school activities, whether it's athletics, whether it's course or whatever else. And I'm wondering, and again, I will apologize for not being able to specify the area, but there is one area that is apparently is sending in students but has no ability to deal with transportation after school. Wondering if that might be looked into at the, perhaps at the school level, but maybe more importantly, recognizing that this is not actually a single school problem, this is a district-wide problem, and I'm hoping...
To transport students to the activities or to move those students to another school?
No, no, to transport them home from activities or to transport, arrange transportation such that they can participate in activities at McAdoo Claire's. Okay, and again, I brought up to, I don't see Jen's level?
Jen's here.
Don't mind me, I'm just blind. To mention that, again, anything that might be worked out within the inner-city schools with the city busing staff, such that there is maybe some kind of an agreement with the district that allows some kind of discounted busing for students who go home at certain hours, having certain school, having certain city buses available to work with at that point in time. City buses in general, as you know, are not, they're not filling full of people at any given time, and perhaps there could be something worked out whereby they pick up people on the corners and, at a particular time, four, thirty, five o'clock, whatever. I just don't know where that's, I mean, this goes back to the days of Angela Park, where in the middle of the summertime, the buses showed up at whatever point and carried them down to the park, and then they brought them back, and I'm wondering if we can't work out something that at least provides the getting back home type part of this. Thank you.
Anything else, Doc?
That's it.
Thank you. Anything else from the audience on non-agenda items? We had a motion to adjourn, so...
Motion to adjourn.
A second, meeting adjourned.